We'll call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic before which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the June 14, 2012 meeting.
The Upshur County Commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, June 14, 2012, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, Creed Pletcher Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, William Parker Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of May 31, 2012, with the following addition. The Commission approved the employment transfer of Carolyn Elizabeth Berry. Primary job duties will include elections and assistance to the bookkeeping department. After reading of the minutes on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the regular meeting minutes of June 7, 2012, as submitted. After reading of the minutes on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved the special meeting minutes of June 11, as submitted. Sheila Adams, Chief Tax Deputy, appeared before the Commission and provided a review of the 2011 delinquent tax list. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the certification. Virgil Miller, Upshur County Sheriff, provided an update status report on the purchase of vehicles for law enforcement. Sheriff Miller contacted Alkins Ford Land and Weston Ford, but no additional bids were received, and Jenkins Ford has withdrawn their bid. Sheriff Miller advised the Commission that the purchase will be made in accordance with the state contract from Stevens Ford in Madison, West Virginia. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the contract extension in the amount of $375 per month with Landmark Geospatial for support and hosting of the Upshur County web mapping application. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the Commission approved the Upshur County Commission Ethics Policy for the Commission and employees that report to the Commission. The policy is an expansion of the West Virginia Ethics Act. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved the appointment of Michael W. Kelly, Animal Control Officer, as the Upshur County Humane Officer effective July 1, 2012. Mr. Kelly has completed certification requirements. William Parker provided the first reading to amend the building permit ordinance. The primary purpose of the amendment is to achieve compatibility with the Upshur County Flood Plane Ordinance. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved and authorized William Parker, County Administrator, to sign required documents to renew the current medical insurance plan effective July 1, 2012, through July 30, 2013. William Parker provided a review of the general county fund budget revisions. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Creed Pletcher, the Commission approved and authorized the President to sign the request for revision to the approved budget. William Parker advised the Commission that he is waiting for further information from law firms concerning agenda item on retaining outside legal counsel for matters relating to contested election petition and response. David D. Taylor Petitioner v. Michael R. Kelly Respondent. Additional information may be available later in the meeting. William Parker presented the Buchanan Upshur Community Engagement Survey results to the Commission. The report from the Create Buchanan Committee provides an analytical review of opinions from community residents concerning what is needed for growth and safety in the downtown area. The Commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, dog warden report, May 2012. Number two, agendas and/or notice of meetings, as listed. Number three, meeting minutes and/or financial reports, as listed. Meetings, as listed. Number five, appointments needed or upcoming, as listed. The Commission approved all invoices for payment. The Commission approved all vacation orders. The Commission approved the following settlements, as listed. The Commission approved the following requests to attend meetings, as listed. The Commission recessed at 12:00 p.m. J.C. Rafferty left the meeting at 12:00 p.m. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upshur County Policy Board at 1:00 p.m. The Commission attended the meeting of the Upshur County Departmental Supervisors at 2:00 p.m. The Commission reconvened at 3:25 p.m. The Commission spoke with Timothy Stranko, Steptoe and Johnson, to review interests as outside legal counsel for matters relating to the contested election petition and response. David D. Taylor Petitioner v. Michael R. Kelly Respondent. After discussion on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission approved the employment of Timothy Stranko, Steptoe and Johnson, as legal counsel for the Commission concerning this matter. William Parker was requested to follow up with Timothy Stranko to finalize arrangements and report back to the Commission. With no further business, on motion by Creed Pletcher, seconded by Donnie Tenny, the Commission meeting adjourned at 4:15 p.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
No, I ask a motion to be approved. Same move.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Okay, first item of business, letter of support for the establishment of Central Appalachia Development Organization Incorporated by Region Seven Planning and Development Council. I'll read just a little bit about what this is and why this is important for Upshur County and the other counties in Region Seven. On behalf of Upshur County, we are writing this letter to show our support for you and Region Seven Planning and Development Council in your efforts in establishing the nonprofit agency known as Central Appalachia Development Organization Incorporated, CADO. We understand that this is a very important endeavor, as a need for additional services continue to be directed your way to meet the needs of your region, especially Upshur County. We understand that establishing this agency will allow you to apply for and receive federal, state funds to develop a revolving loan program for your seven-county region consisting of Barbara Braxton, Gilmore, Lewis, Randolph, Tucker, and of course, Upshur. With the assistance of you and your staff, you and your staff have provided Upshur County over the past 20 years, we know that the development of this nonprofit agency will greatly enhance the ability of our local businesses to continue to have resources to grow and create and retain jobs for our residents. This agency will be a great complement to Region Seven Planning and Development Council as you continue to serve Upshur County and surrounding areas. Just note that Upshur County lends its full support in this endeavor and will assist you and the Region Seven Planning and Development Council as you organize this agency. That's the letter that is proposed that we send in support of this. And I think this is a good thing that will help in a lot of cases where there's a little bit of extra need in putting funding together for projects, and this will be an important part of making that happen. So, we have a motion, we approve sending this letter of support.
What size loans do they make, Donnie? You have any idea, dollar ones?
Well, it depends on how much they're applying for some grant money. It could be anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 to, you know, $100,000, or depends on how much money's in the pot, too. It'll be low-interest loan money. Like I say, a lot of it will be on larger products, projects where they need just a little bit more to make the whole thing come together. But there'll also be for small businesses that need some help in making things happen. So, I think it'll be a good boost to the economy and a little something extra that's needed in a lot of projects. So, we have a motion to approve?
Same move.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Okay, next item is second reading to amend the building permit ordinance. Amendment is recommended due to compatibility with Upshur County Flood Plane Ordinance. And we had our first reading last week. Is there any, Willie, anything else we need to add to that?
There's no changes. We found a couple of typos that I corrected, but no other changes to the ordinance unless the Commission would have any questions. I've also slated it for another reading for next Thursday to be finalized.
Well, the only thing that we're changing as far as dollars and cents, of course, it's only $15 for a permit. And the purpose of the permit is to determine if it's in the floodplain. Is that correct? Then if it is in the floodplain, then there's requirements you have to... But that's the purpose of this, of the building permit, is strictly to determine if new construction, new, about anything, is in the floodplain. And the purpose of that is that it's a FEMA requirement that we comply strictly with FEMA's requirements in order for the people of Upshur County to qualify for flood insurance. That's what it's all about. If we don't do our part in ensuring that people that build in the floodplain follow FEMA's guidelines, which basically, the purpose of that is to reduce flood insurance costs to the federal government. That's the whole purpose of it.
Yeah, the ordinance, the one that we're currently operating under until this is finalized, the ordinance states there's no building permit required for anything less than $2,500 in valuation. Well, that's fine for a building permit ordinance, that's not fine for a floodplain ordinance. We still need to regulate any and all development in the floodplain, even if, you know, there's not much you can do for $2,500, but you can get a couple of outbuildings that can cause a problem in the floodplain, or whatever, you know, the situation may be. And then in addition to make, and as it relates to the floodplain, bringing that over to our building permit ordinance to make sure that, you know, it was the intent from the beginning, but it spells it out in the ordinance now of site development, site preparation, and any other development, not just construction of a structure, but site preparation in any development that requires a permit. So, everything requires a permit now. And then we're waiving the fee for anything less than $250 in valuation of materials and labor.
Any other comments on that? Not them, we'll have a motion that we've had our second reading to comply with our requirements on that.
Same move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Next item is approved request from Upshur County Solid Waste Authority for payroll administration, cost reimbursement, and commission. Employment of Burl J. Smith is outlined in the request at the rate of $17.50 there. Now, one thing here, Willie, it says the Upshur County Commission will administer the payroll free of charge on an hourly basis. Now, what's that mean?
Don't know what the intent of their letter is. I know when we had the discussion, the question was, would we charge anything to process their payroll? I said, no. Once it's added to our system, there's really not much of additional cost involved, it's just another field we go through for an employee. But that's, we're going it free of charge for the solid waste authority, just as we do a couple other agencies, Development Authority, EMS, for their office manager, et cetera.
So, that on an hourly basis?
Not sure why that wording's there, but we're not charging.
The hourly basis that we, the amount of time we spend will be multiplied by zero.
Multiplied by zero, yeah. The few seconds we spend will be multiplied by zero.
Yeah, with it being computerized, it's not... Okay, so basically, the existing Director of the Solid Waste Authority, Sandy, is retiring, is that correct? And then Burl's going to be working, what was it, 12 hours?
Twelve hours a week.
12 hours a week at 17.50 an hour? And this is not going to have any negative effect on our employee count as far as insurance and all that?
No, since it's less than a 50%, you know, position, less than 20 hours a week, it doesn't count towards that, and, you know, no retirement involved, and the previous individual worked for North Central West Virginia Recycling Agency and the Solid Waste Authority, weren't contracted through them, so...
Okay, any other questions or comments on that request? And if not, I'd ask for a motion to approve the request.
Same move.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Okay, approved settlement agreement and release of all claims on the Allahak Council Incorporated, Boy Scouts of America. This has been an ongoing project, Willie. You might just give everybody the history and what we finally concluded that we'd be willing to do.
As I remember the history, there was a lady that left some property to, Pauline Vaxa is her name, left some property to Banks District of Upshur County. Well, Banks District is just a taxing district is all Banks District is. It's not a legal entity. So, there was questions in that regard. The attorney for the estate had filed a quit clean deed of passing the property to residual heirs, and they had passed that on to the Boy Scouts of America, because it had to be in a conserv... easement used for conservatory purposes is what the deed restricts it to. So, at that point, once we were finalizing the estate that appeared before the County Commission, there was questions brought from the County Commission of the intent of the original will, it would have possibly been to leave that to Upshur County. Legal counsel for the Boy Scouts disagreed with that, so back in 2010 or something like that.
10, I think.
I think it was. There was a suit brought to settle the matter, so the court could decide what was the original intent. That never was presented to the circuit court, the suit was filed, but it was continued and discussion continued between councils, and the settlement, as I understand and read, is the County Commission will receive ownership of the surface, and then 25% of the mineral rights will also come to the Commission, so... And once it's finalized, I'm not exactly sure where the property is physically located. We've, I know we've looked at the maps, other than Southern Upshur County.
The Boy Scouts can use it all they want.
They can use it all they want.
If they can find the property.
But if I remember right, it was approximately 52 acres, 52 acres plus or minus, if I remember correctly. So, this brings us to the settlement agreement today for your approval.
Okay, and as we've talked about this several times and debated about what was fair for both parties, and have come to an agreement that we own the surface, we would benefit, the Upshur County Commission would benefit of any mineral extraction of 25% of that. So, I think it's a good settlement, and there's some possibilities there. It might be able to help the citizens of Upshur County down the road, so I'd ask for a motion to approve the agreement.
Same move.
And I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same side.
I'm a little weak this morning.
No any opposition to that? Seems to kind of work better with two, you know? Tell J.C. I said no. Anyway, now, the next item is approved fiscal year 2012-13 wage and salary schedule for employees under the direction and control of the County Commission.
The one you have in your agenda is, was incorrect. I'd left out a couple of people, and they had a couple of numbers incorrect, one a 911 dispatcher and a couple other positions we've added, but I made a separate copy. But the change was on a Lacy Lamb, one of our 911 dispatchers, adding Jamie Queen, who I forgot, we, as a clerical position in the magistrate court system reimbursed by the worthless check fund. And we'd had one individual drop off our child visitation center that I had to drop off. I'd forgot that she had resigned. So, those are the only corrections that I can remember that I made. They were fairly minor, but I wanted to make a revised copy for you to have.
Okay.
The other constitutional offices are in the process of doing the same thing for the, and getting that information to the Office of the County Clerk, and I'll provide copies of that for your information in a future agenda.
Okay. All right, we need a motion to approve the fiscal year 2012-13 wage and salary schedule for employees under the direction and control of the Upshur County Commission.
Same move.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Approved county depository bonds of First Community Bank for the period of July 1, 2012, through June 30, 2013. And for information purposes, you might just explain that process, Willie, and...
This, any institution that has county funds is recommended or required, I really like to look at it, required from our standpoint, to pledge securities, and so our deposits are protected that are in excess of the FDIC limits of, right now, I think that's $250,000 if I'm not mistaken. So, that's the reason for this pledge, and then if they want to substitute, it requires approval of the governmental entity if they want to sell one of these or transfer it someplace else, and then substitute another pledge in place of that. But it protects the deposits, the taxpayers' deposits, in case a financial institution would go into default.
Okay, all right, do we have a motion to approve this item?
Same move.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. Next is review comprehensive economic development strategy, also known as SETS, project priority listing, and assignment of local priority points. And we have till sometime in July to do this, but the list on 12/14 are projects that we, this is an ongoing list, and every year we look at it and see if there's some projects that have been funded, and some that are no longer projects that the entities are looking at. But last year, we had, we can give a maximum of 25 points for your top project, which was Adrian PSD, their next project. Then we had 20 points for the regional airport expansion, 20 for Tenerton PSD, Bay 3 Sewer, and 20 for Elkins Road, their next water line extension, and 20 for the wellness complex. And so, we have a list here that's available. If anyone has any input on projects, thoughts, we certainly would welcome those, and then we will ponder over this list and make a decision here within the next probably couple, three weeks, couple of weeks, probably. The deadline's July the...
July the 20th, on my schedule at least, I would, you know, there's a discussion again in the following week with action, then either the first or second week in July.
Right.
With the things the way they are, though, I wonder how much money we could even expect to, if any, if any, money.
Well, the problem is the state, the state grant money, or the federal grant money's coming down to the state is just a few million dollars, and the requests are several million dollars, and that's getting to be the trend. There's less and less money. A lot of these projects, as you get farther out into the county, you know, where it used to cost $10,000 per customer to put water, now it's 25, 30, in some places, $70,000 per customer. So, the farther you go out into the county, the more the costs are, you have the pumping stations and tanks and your, you know, higher elevation, a lot of, the easy fruit's been picked. What's left in Upshur County? We are fortunate, Upshur County, it's amazing how far out in the county there's city water. I mean, there's city water at Shelbyville and Brooks Hill and, you know, I'm not sure what percentage of the county, but what's left are the areas that when they did extensions, they had to cut those out of the extensions because, well, just like Hemlock, the, when Mount Hope Water looked at putting city water at Hemlock, which there's a real need, there's no doubt about it, a lot of these people have to haul drinking water, but $75,000 per customer, because you have to have two pumping stations, anybody that knows the hill going up on Hemlock, two pumping stations that pump the water up there. And then you go such a distance between houses that it's, you know, it's sad, but it's just a matter of economics. And so, your cost per customer is higher, the mountain grant money is dwindling, and it's lower, so it just, it makes for a bad situation for those folks that are up on top of the mountains and in those far out reaches in the county. But we are fortunate, Upshur County, we have PSDs and Mount Hope Water Association that have, you know, and Adrian has raised the rates in order to get water to our neighbors. And, you know, I'm sure they've taken some flak for that, but I'm sure those people that are out in those areas are very appreciative that they have water. And I've seen it time and time again, that people that don't have water say, well, you know, heck, I'd pay $75 a month for water, because I'm hauling it, taking my clothes to the laundromat, but when they get water, and then the neighbors come in, and theirs is going to have to go up $10 a month for their neighbors, they don't want to do that. Unfortunately, that's what happens a lot of times. But the main problem is the cost for customers is getting so high, and if you don't have grant money, then the only thing you can do is raise rates, because you've got to be able to pay for those extensions, and the only way you can pay for it are people's water bills. So, it's, you know, it's one of those situations where it's not good, but we do what we can with what money's available and try to work with the state agencies to make as many projects happen as possible. So, that's about the story on that. Next is report on matters regarding the contested election petition and response, David D. Taylor Petitioner versus Michael R. Kelly Respondent. So, you might give us an update, Mr. Parker, on scheduled events coming down the pike?
As you gentlemen are aware, the Commission employs the services of Timothy Stranko of Steptoe and Johnson to serve as your counsel on this matter. I did meet with him, and he is to have a status report to me tomorrow. They're doing some research and looking at, you know, previous case law and previous cases, and have that report to me by the 29th. Mr. Stranko will be appearing before the County Commission meeting on July the 5th, scheduled, I think, for 1:30. Some of that may be an executive session, but some of it may not, depending on the situation. Do not know if Mr. Stranko's communicated with counsel for the other parties, but he would like to have a pre-hearing conference on July the 9th in my office, himself, and I with counsel from both parties, tentatively, assuming everybody's schedule is correct. And then the hearing has tentatively been scheduled for July the 18th, if that meets with the Commission's schedules. It'd be Wednesday, July the 18th. So, that is the schedule that we've developed pending your approval for the hearing date.
So, we need to make sure that all these dates work before...
Well, the 18th is the most critical for the Commission, because that's where you'll be involved, is the hearing.
So, we need, do we need to go ahead and approve that date today?
If... If, if there's no, if that would be agreeable, if there's no conflicts, I know there's a meeting that some of the commission is attending in Pittsburgh that'll be finishing up on the 17th. And I didn't know of anything else on the 18th when I previously talked to your, talked to the commission about their schedules. I just wanted to make sure that had not changed. The 18th was still a good date.
Is that good for you, Chris? Well, yeah, that, the meeting in Pittsburgh ends on Tuesday. Okay, so do we have a motion that we approved July the 18th date for that meeting?
Same move.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same side. Motion carried. Okay, we have a report on, on our NACO prescription discount card program. They give us a report of the savings of the citizens of Upshur County that use the, once again, we'll reiterate what that is. National Association of Counties is an organization that individual counties are members of. And one of their services they offer is a discount prescription discount card. If you don't have prescription insurance coverage, we have them everywhere. Get you one, they're free, don't cost anything. When you go to pick up your prescription, you just hand them that card and the average discount's about 20%. And we'd encourage more people to use those. The, yeah, I'll find it. We've got the information here, let me get to page 15. Here it is. The savings for May in Upshur County was, wasn't a lot, it was $307.96. The average percentage savings of those that used the card was 21.44%. So, if you don't have coverage for prescriptions, then we would encourage you to get one of those free cards and then whenever you go pick up your prescriptions, you know, 21%, 22%, that's, that's a pretty good savings. So, that's the report on that. We have agendas and notices meetings and that's about what we have on the agenda unless, is there anything else, Willie?
We have some paperwork and I, which we'll have some more coming over from the office of the...
We had a question prior to our meeting and I'd like this gentleman to step up there and ask the question because...
I have a question. There's been in a paper that the sheriff wants to buy four expeditions and he has come to the commission to get their approval, I assume. And my question is, among other things, does the commission have the authority to approve or disapprove his purchase?
Well, I think you could answer that, Mr. Parker.
The reason that Sheriff Miller came before the commission a couple of weeks ago is we're still operating in our current fiscal year budget and he was wanting to place an order before July 1st, which would have required the approval of the commission because we do not, we haven't rolled over to our new budget year. Or after July 1st, the sheriff or any other constitutional office, if the money's in their budget, which it is for these vehicles, to lease purchase these vehicles over a three year period is the plan, the sheriff can, or other constitutional office can make that purchase without the approval of the commission. It does not require the approval of the commission to make that purchase.
All right, my question is, why is he purchasing four? That seems a lot, that's a third of a dozen that he's purchasing. Why have that many at this time?
That matter was discussed and reviewed with the commission during our budget process and that's what was established in the budget to replace, based on the condition of some of our vehicles we have in our fleet at this point. We had talked, you know, at that point about four vehicles. I don't think it had been finalized of what type of vehicle that I remember at that time. But it's, you know, a process we normally go through and it's like I've said, once that's in there, as long as the sheriff or other constitutional office is expending the money in the line item designated for the overall category of equipment, new equipment, capital equipment in this case, and has complied with the purchasing guidelines set out in statute or regulation, then the county commission has no authority to override that decision.
Well, did he say why he wanted to particularly pick expeditions, the most expensive vehicle around?
I know in my discussions with the sheriff, I don't know if it was during a meeting or just individual discussions, there was, he had some concerns about some of the changes they were making to other vehicles. Of course, the Crown Vics are being phased out and eliminated as a police vehicle. And he had some concerns about other make of vehicles that we've used in the past or had in the past of their maintenance records, so to speak. And the changes in, at least in his understanding, they were making to the Explorer, the smaller, next size down SUV, as I understand it. So, to my knowledge, that's his reasoning for looking at expeditions.
Like, I guess he realized he probably gets seven, eight miles a gallon at the most idling and all that stuff. Now, my, my next question is, it, it's, it's not the amount of space inside or anything like that, it was because of the models and changes and all that stuff?
Well, I'm, space may have been a factor also, I just, you know...
Well, I looked at a cruiser downstairs and a cruiser downstairs and there's nothing in the front seat, nothing in the back seat. The only thing in the thing is the thing's on the diceboard and the clipboard laying on the sleeve.
Yeah.
Everything's in the trunk. So, apparently that's not it.
Yeah.
I might, I might, go ahead.
You know, to my knowledge, I don't remember a whole lot of discussion about space.
My next question is, is the sheriff, I mean, would the sheriff like to be in hot pursuit after somebody driving an expedition and trying to catch somebody who's speeding or going down a highway with an expedition, going down a road, wobbling all over the place, top heavy and all that stuff? He gonna end up killing himself, somebody else? I'd rather be in a cruiser if I was gonna do that.
It probably would change the strategy of pursuit.
Be no pursuit. Him all night.
Well, yeah, I guess, I think the other thing, Willie, you might touch on, since there was a, a letter to the editor about how this whole bidding process works and, you know, we, we want to buy locally as much as we can, but there's certain requirements of the law that we're, that we're confined. You know, the law can be such a stubborn thing. It can make you do things you don't want to do, but, and that's not in reference to you, but this...
No, I have a problem with that.
Right. But this, this, there was a letter to the editor and why don't you address what our constraints are as far as bidding?
Well, you know, as it relates to county commissions, the bidding threshold is $15,000 for any one item. If you're purchasing this pen and it's less than $15,000, you don't have to go to bid. If you're purchasing a very, very good pen evidently and it's over $15,000, you would have to bid that purchase. The, and you can purchase from the state contract without going through another competitive bid process. Not only state contract, but any federal contracts or any other contracts of governmental agencies that you can piggyback on.
Because basically, they, that state contract, they've taken a statewide bid on certain things.
They've done the legwork.
They've done the legwork as far as the bidding.
And, you know, that's not saying that, you know, a vendor couldn't necessarily beat the state contract price, which has happened numerous times in the past or have that ability or match the state contract price. But in the situation we had most recently is there was a local vendor that was willing to match the state contract price, which I applaud and thank them for, but that doesn't meet your requirements, as I understand them, on, on the bidding threshold. That's why I cautioned the commission of possibly wanting to make sure we had at least, you know, one or two other bids at that point. So we were in a competitive bid situation because we technically were not purchasing from the state contract. We were purchasing from a vendor that was willing to match the state contract's price, which is fine. As I understand, the sheriff, he made contact with a couple of other vendors that were not interested and, and did not want to meet that price or sell at a price like that. And the local vendor, for whatever reason, decided to withdraw their bid, which is unfortunate. But that's their decision, not ours.
Well, I'd like to see a level playing field where, where by, at least they have the opportunity to bid on them. Some dealerships weren't even aware, I guess, that it was, it was happening. And I don't think that's fair to the local businesses.
You know, the, I mean, for example, when, you know, again, it's just one vehicle when the commission, when you purchased a maintenance vehicle, the last maintenance vehicle we purchased, which has been a couple of years ago, you know, we made contact with all of the, the local dealers and, you know, we specified comparable vehicles as much as possible between, at that point, the Chevy dealership, the Ford dealership, the Toyota dealership. And I think those are the three we looked at because those are the three local that we had for a new vehicle. And at that point, the Toyota was, was the least expensive compared to all three of those. So, at that point, we've purchased Fords in the past, we've purchased Chevys in the past, depending on the situation of, of the bidding requirements or the bidding situation. But, of course, the sheriff is the more vehicles, largest fleet and can make purchases as long, again, as long as he adheres to the bidding requirements or his budget constraints and, you know, for whatever reason, he was looking at Fords versus other types of makes and models.
Well, and there again, once that money goes into the other elected official's budgets, then it's their responsibility as far as to meet the bidding requirements. We have some oversight and a little bit of control over that, but it's their responsibility to, to meet that bidding. Just like if we're spending money from the commission, then we have the responsibility to obey the law as far as bidding requirements. If it goes into any other elected official's budget, then they have that responsibility. And, and that's not a commission issue, that's an elected official issue. Ed, did you have one on...
Yeah, just to add a subject a little bit. Several years ago, the sheriff bought two ATVs to be used in pursuit of criminals up dark alleys and down hall, down valleys and stuff like that. Does anybody know where they're at and how often they've been used and what the condition of them is?
I think they have a, don't they have a trailer they keep those in?
We do have trailers that they've, you know, I'm not sure if they're at the airport or stored at the health department. I, I'm just not sure at this point. And I'm not sure of the UCD either. I know they've been used a few times.
Right. I know that's something the sheriff could answer those questions for you.
As a, you all insure those though, right?
Yes.
Well, it's a county policy.
Yeah, everything under, all offices are entitled to the Upshur County Commission name because we're, they're the legal entity, the commission is the legal entity and the insurance is provided to the commission office. Just as it relates to purchases, most offices, A, the money's not in their budget or enough money to make a single purchase of over $15,000. That's why, you know, usually the sheriff and vehicles or if the assessor would be buying something out of the reevaluation fund, you know, a vehicle or some other item which she has in the past and, or the county commission. Usually those are the three offices that have a concern of making sure they meet the bidding requirements and statutes. Most of the other offices do not have, you know, money in their budget that would meet the bidding threshold, again, but many offices get competitive bid situations, less than $15,000 as a, but you're required to above $15,000. I know Mr. Gade, when he purchased a copier, that's one thing that pops to my mind, you know, a year or two ago, it was less than, of course, $15,000, but he had a competitive bid situation that, you know, that he looked at.
Well, it's always good, even like you say, under the $15,000, you get some quotes or competitive bids even on that stuff, so you get the best deal and the best bang for your buck.
Well, pertaining to a little newspaper article, I don't mind taking the shots if I'm responsible, but I think if somebody else is responsible, they, the person writing these things to the newspaper, they need to know who the target is.
And, you know, it's, you know, again, and I, I sort of, I agree with that sentiment is I don't mind, and my function as county administrator, part of my function is to help protect the commission and I felt that's what I was doing in that regard. If people criticized me for that, then so be it.
You were doing the right thing.
Okay, well, unless someone else has something, we will start paying the bills. You have something?
I got a, just a brief moment.
All right. Keep a camera running there, Dennis.
I'm sure you're, you're aware of the ongoing Festival Fridays at Jawbone Park and, and it's, it's been hugely successful. So I haven't seen either of you there yet.
I've been attending the Festive Fridays at Homensville.
All right.
Sometimes there's other things we have to do besides Festival Fridays.
Understood.
We'll be there.
Understood. And, and with, with 19 Fridays, you got 17 more chances to be there. Funding for that, for the entertainment, was provided partially by the CVB, a very large donation. And pretty much matching funds were provided through Create Buchanan by selling sponsorships for the event. We're projecting our, our expenses through the year. We're, we're running a little short on funds, or we can see ourselves running a little short on funds. We're, we're doing things like giving free balloons to the kids, which helium is way up and the balloons are cheap, but it's, by giving things to the kids, it gets the parents to come. And, and if you keep the kids active and happy, then, then the parents stay for the full three hours and they spend money with the vendors and they buy food and, and enjoy the music. And I, I know everybody's short on money right now, but if the commission could come up with a donation of some kind to help the event, it would be greatly appreciated.
Do you have a, you have a budget that shows you revenues and expenses that we could take a look at so...
I can, I can have Melody send that over from UCD.
Okay. Get that and we'll take a look at it. We, we allocate a certain amount of money for different events like Strawberry Festival and the Upshur County Fair. I'm not sure where we are on that, Willie, whether, I know first July, we've allocated a set amount of money. I don't know if we've sat down and locked in all that.
Not all of it has been locked in, but I don't, I just don't remember the numbers off the top of my head.
If you can get us the budget on that and the sources and, and expenses and, and then what the projected shortfall, we'll certainly take a look at it.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have anything? Okay, well, we will start on our paperwork then.